Mayor Rankin, Vice Mayor Smith, Councilmember Selaya, Councilmember Hawkins. You'll be absent tonight, Councilmember Montano, Councilmember Walter, Councilmember Woolridge. We have a quorum.
I can't hear you.
Yes, Your Honor. Mr. Mayor and City Councilmembers, it's a pleasure to be with you this evening. The last time I was here was a few years ago. Either I'm too electricistically wired or something. All those vitamins. Anyway, the last time I was here was a few years ago, and I recognize some of you that were here then. That was when we were annexing the Dobson Farms into your fine town. And I spoke in favor of that and in favor of the Dobsons at that time. At that time, I also expressed I hope someday you'll come over and take over in my area. Well, that's before you this evening. I do not live in the Magic Ranch, per se. They surround me. And I didn't know that for a long time. But I'm not part of it, but that's part of the annexation that you're considering. I want you to know, I have spoken to many of my neighbors who are in favor of that annexation. You're a very historical city, but you're also a city with a town with a great future. And I personally like being a part of something that knows where it's going and has a bright outlook on the future. So I would ask you, I know it costs money to do all the things that you need to do, but I would ask you to consider bringing the Magic Ranch area into the town of Florence. Thank you for your time.
Item six, public hearings and presentations. Item A, a public hearing to receive citizens' comments on amending the Town's Code for Development Impact Fees and first reading of ordinance number 598-13, an ordinance of the town of Florence, Penile County, Arizona, amending Title 15 Land Uses, Chapter 150 Development Code, Sections 150.280, Development Impact Fees, and Sections 150.281, 150.282,
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Town Council. Tonight's public hearing and first reading for an ordinance amending Town's Code concerning development impact fees is the next step in a series of steps that we've undergone over the course of the past few months. This is to bring the Town Code into compliance with recent legislative changes to the Arizona State's revised statutes concerning development fees. The ordinance sets forth the standards and procedures for creating and assessing development impact fees and for administering the Town's Development Impact Fee Program consistent with the state statutes. On July 1st, following a public hearing, which was held on May 20th, the Town adopted by Resolution the Land Use Assumptions and Infrastructure Improvement Plan, which are the basis for the calculation of the Town's Development Impact Fees, which are also contained within the ordinance. Second reading and adoption of the ordinance are scheduled for September 16th, and the changes to the development impact fees as specified in the ordinance will be effective on December 1st. And with that, I turn it back to Council. There's nothing that falls outside of the state requirements? No.
Item six B, a public hearing to receive citizens' comment on a request from Jared Baxter, portion of the Merrill Ranch Plan Unit Development and first reading of ordinance number 599-13, an ordinance of the town of Florence, Penile County, Arizona, approving an amendment to the Merrill Ranch Plan Unit Development, PZC-35-12-PUD.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. We have a public hearing tonight on this application. It's to amend a portion of the Merrill Ranch PUD. It's a portion of land that you can see on the maps here on the next page here. Our little power, our remote isn't working tonight, so Gilbert's going to help me kind of get through some of these slides. But you can see on the map in front of you on your monitors, all the colored areas represents the Merrill Ranch PUD, which of course is separate but adjacent to the Anthem at Merrill Ranch PUD. The area that we're specifically looking at is circled there in the yellow, and on the next slide, you'll see that this is the area that they're changing. And what happens here in this area is that currently, in the current plan, all of the area that's described there is planned for commercial mixed-use land uses. Under the proposal, about 400 acres of that land would go to single-family residential land uses. As you can see to the north of the, so the yellow areas would then go single-family residential, the red would be retained as commercial. The yellow areas, though, you can see, are immediately adjacent to the Anthem at Merrill Ranch, where they are building the single-family homes or have built the single-family homes, and also where they have their major parks and recreation facilities. Nearby also is our temporary fire station facility in Unit 17. So you can see what has happened in that area, that it makes, it's logical for Poltey or another home builder to come down and build the single-family homes in this area. And Poltey will convey to you that they plan to do that as an extension of the parksite community. And that would make a logical progression and be an area where the infrastructure availability is excellent today. As you know, there's some challenges with going east of Felix Road, and a while back, we had the discussion with Johnson Utilities, and the Town agreed for them to be the service provider in this area. And that was done in part so that we could continue the growth of the rooftops in this area, that in turn ultimately supports the development and the success of all of the commercial and the retail that's in this area. Now, I know there is, the last time we did a major amendment to the Merrill Ranch PUD, there was a lot of discussion about the loss of the commercial, the loss of the employment. I think that turned out pretty well in hindsight, but I know that it was a big leap. In this area, we feel that it's also a good land use change, and it was one that was supported by staff and also the Planning and Zoning Commission. And I want to go ahead and zoom to the next slide. There's still two commercial parcels, the parcel 13 and 14 are retained there on the plan, and one is 40 acres and one is 23 and a half acres. And just for perspective, on about, on a 23-acre parcel, it actually still is enough land to support a big box type of store and a couple of pad sites, if they were so inclined to do so. So on 40 acres, you could still get that done, and you could probably get some inline shops in addition to the big box. So even with the retention of those two commercial pieces, there's still a lot of commercial in the area. But I want to show you beyond what's left there in 13 and 14, there's a lot of commercial that is existing either in the general plan or zoning, or that we would expect to get. Montero to the south has commercial land, La Entrada to the north, Franklin and Hunt Highway has commercial office land, up and down the Hunt Highway corridor from 79 all the way to Arizona Farms. Anthem at Merrill Ranch has some very strategic corners for commercial development. We already see Safeway at one corner, but you have the other three corners of that intersection that are planned for commercial. Felix, Addaway, Arizona Farms Road, and I want to show, go through a couple more exhibits here, Gilbert. You can see in the Merrill Ranch plan that all of the red area to the south of Hunt Highway is still retained, and then Harrison Merrill retained the salmon-colored area that's designated as commercial, which is to the west of the land use amendment area. And then, of course, within the residential areas of Merrill Ranch, there are the village centers, which have some mixed uses and some commercial land uses. And let's go through a couple more. Anthem at Merrill Ranch, as I spoke about, the commercial centers there, and also around the hospital, there's additional parcels that would be planned for office and maybe some light commercial types of uses. Montero has a commercial corner in there in addition to the solar farm. La Entrada, excellent shopping center there, right as you come past the buttes. The next image is pretty interesting because there's a conglomeration of all those things that I've just discussed here, but we also overlaid the current status of the north-south corridor, the freeway corridor. And as you can see, there's this divergence there as you go through the Anthem community. Our preference, which is supported by our general plan and every action that we've taken thus far, is the eastern approach, that would be on the east and the north side then of the Merrill Ranch development. We have strongly advocated against the other corridor option. As you move that corridor out, you see that the opportunities for commercial move away from the subject site, and will move more towards the freeway corridor and more towards where the major transportation corridors are. As you can see, everything is kind of interacted here as we discuss this and later on the agenda of the annexations, but you can see where the freeway corridor intersects Arizona Farms Road, and that becomes an extremely likely location for regional commercial. And should we get a shopping mall or something similar to that, that is probably the premier location for it because of Arizona Farms Road being a regional east-west road, and then the north-south corridor intersecting at that point. You can see if there's an intersection on Hunt Highway, that that would create an opportunity for the additional employment and commercial. You can see if we come down where we want to go with the plan on intersect with Butte, that would also bring folks into the downtown for a different flavor of commercial and access into the territory square development. So while we're losing the 400 acres of commercial there, it's staff contention really that the market for the commercial and the greatest viability for the commercial is not at that particular location, but in these other locations that we've identified. Of course, we've just looked at the middle portion of town. If you go north and south of this, there's other opportunities as well. We further contend that the ability to do this today and to keep Poltey building homes out here and expanding the Anthem community, again, is expediting our ability to get the rooftops on the ground, get the population up, and be able to support these other things that we long to see in the long run. So that is a quick overview. I think some of you actually were around since we first started doing all these gyrations here, and the plan has gone through a few changes, and I suspect there will be a few more to come. But you do have a recommendation in front of you, but tonight, of course, is just a public hearing. The action is, would be on the meeting on August 19th, and I'd be happy to address any questions. I know the applicant or Jordan Rose, on behalf of the applicant, would like to speak as well. Yeah, if we can go back to Members Selaya, Mayor Members of the Council, if we can go to, let's go back another image. Let's go back one more. Hey, you can see, if I had the remote, I would pop it out to you a little bit more, but you can see Felix Road coming down through the amendment area, hitting Hunt Highway, and then proceeding to come south and then curving to the west into Addaway Road. Can you see the curvature of the road coming through there? And that was the Felix Road Development Agreement that transpired between Larry Miller, Ellerswith Montero, and Harrison Merrill at that time with Merrill Ranch. So that does come through and creates some connectivity. Addaway also will go up to Hunt Highway as well.
So the property we're looking at right now is north of Hunt Highway?
The property, the amendment area is only the area that is north of Hunt Highway, yes.
And that only includes in the commercial area 14, 13, is that correct?
Yes, yes. In the land use plan, you can see that two parcels are retained for commercial, and the other parcels, which some, about 400 acres, are intended for residential purposes. And in between that, you can see that there's some washes going through that area.
And the developer's actually going to give up 400 acres of commercial land?
Yes, yes. And the, this is, there's a lot going on here with the Southwest Value Partners is the current owner of the land, but they are looking to sell the land to Poltey to build the homes. There is a possibility that there could even be another builder within this particular area.
Any other question? Okay, we'll let the developers and everybody talk. Jordan, you got two minutes.
Mayor and Vice Mayor, Members of the Council, I'll beat that. Jordan Rose with Rose Log Group on behalf of Southwest Value Partners in Poltey. And with me tonight is Dan Bono from Poltey and Jared Baxter, the engineer on the project. I just want to thank the Planning Commission and the staff for all the work on this somewhat complicated project. It is an administrative act under their PUD to approve this type of a change. This is not a change that would rise to the level of legislative council action, and I just wanted to let you know that Poltey's excited to continue to build homes there across from their park site, and so we think it's a really good change. Any questions we'll take, and thanks for your time.
Anybody have any question for Jordan? That is the fastest I've ever seen her do.
Can I keep going?
No. Thanks, Jordan.
Thank you.
This time I open the public hearing. Any public comment? Seeing no movement, we'll close the public hearing.
Item C, presentation of Years of Servant Award to Samuel Pankey for 15 years of dedicated service to the town of Florence.
Come on up here, Sam. Well, Dan, do you have anything you'd like to say before I get into it? You have anything?
Real quick, Sam's been with the department 15 years. He's worked all aspects of patrol. He's also been a former K-9 officer and is a supervisor on the midnight shift. He's really done a lot to further community policing in the Anthem area, and I'm really proud to have him, and I look forward for 15 more good years out of him.
Did he say five? Go sit down. No, Sam. You know, when I was chief of police, he wanted a job with me, and I wouldn't hire him. I made a mistake. I can see that now. The, you've been with us a long time. We've been through some ups and downs. You see some changes come around Florence. We've raised a kid together. She was real small. Remember that? And his hair doesn't fall out, but he does keep it cut short. I don't know if there are any gray up there or not, but, but Sam, really, we've known each other a long time as the mayor and as the chief of police, and just as a friend. On behalf of the citizens of town, thank you very much for the service that you've provided to us. We hope and we pray that your career continues on for another 15 years, like Dan says, until Dan gets ready to retire. So he's stuck with us, too. But, you know, it's what a police officer does on duty and off duty, it's an example for the young children of this community. That's what we need. And you've done a good job of it. We want you to continue to do it and instill that in the new officers coming onboard. And on behalf of the town of Florence, we'd like to present you this certificate of appreciation for 15 years of service, and we really thank you, Sam. Thank you very, very much.
I appreciate this. I came in at a good time. I've been growing with the Town as the Town has grown with my family and I. I've had a lot of good leadership, you know, through the Council, the members of the department, and I greatly appreciate it. And I do look forward to a few more years here. Thank you.
Okay, we have one more thing to give, but I'm not going to give it to him. I'm going to give it to Belinda. Belinda, on behalf of the Town, take Sam's gift card. Go out and have a good time, and then come back and tell him about it, okay? Again, Sam, on behalf of the Town of Florence, thank you very much for your service. We look forward to giving you your 20 here pretty quick. Okay, thank you very much.
Item C, presentation, oh, I'm sorry, we just did that. in the town of Florence, Arizona.
At this time, the Town Council is going to proclaim August 2013 as Child Support Awareness Month.
Item E, proclamation naming August 2013 as Drowning Impact Awareness Month in the town of Florence.
This time, the Town Council will proclaim that August 2013 is drowning impact awareness month, and if anybody has any question on that, please contact our fire department. They'll be able to assist you with everything we need on that. Because two seconds, they say, is too long, and it really matters.
Item F, public safety presentation for the Florence Police Department.
Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of the Council, Mr. Montoya, just want to take a few minutes of your time and talk a little bit about the Florence Police Department, some of the changes that have occurred over this last year. As you see, we were awarded one of the safest cities across the nation. I don't think that's by accident. I think it really has to do with the hard work of the men and women of the Florence Police Department, both sworn and non-sworn. What we see up here before is a mission statement. We worked on this earlier in the year. This was done by all the employees of the Police Department. They took ownership in it. It's something they can be proud of and something they can work with, and it's fired through every day, so. What's the Florence Police Department look like? We have 30 sworn officers, and I broke down the assignments, administrative, myself and my lieutenant, five sergeants, three detectives, one assigned to the Penile County Task Force that works countywide on drug cases, and basically 20 patrol officers. When we compare yourselves to a couple of other communities, you have Eloy, which is about 16,000 in population, has 34 officers. That also includes their prison population as well. Coolidge, next door to us, 11,000, has 34 officers. And how do you come up with the number of officers? What's workable? Well, in the past, over the career, a lot of departments across the country have said, "Well, you got so many thousand people, let's do two officers per thousand." Well, in Florence, that really doesn't work. Doesn't work in a lot of communities. If you did, by our stated population of approximately 25,000, if you went two officers per thousand, you'd have 50 officers. Well, do the calls for service really match up to that? No, there is a better way, and I'll show you that in a second. But I do want to know, there's been some talk about, "Well, you have the prisons," and "do they generate calls?" Last year alone, we handled 400 calls for service at the prison facilities. You have to remember that the private prisons are not law enforcement, although they are security-minded. If there is an inmate-on-inmate attack or anything else, a theft, they report it to the Florence Police Department, and we respond to them as we would in any community. So they're all calls for service in our institutional population. Okay, how do you pick? How do you decide? How many officers do we need? Well, the International Association of Chiefs of Police really has done a lot of work and has broken this down for you. When you take an officer's workload, his duty time, they work 10-hour shifts. We break it down into thirds. A third of their shift should be very proactive. You're out doing patrols, you're looking for things that might be wrong, you're out there doing community policing. Another 30-year department of your shift time is going to be reactive. You're going to be out there taking the calls for service as you're handled, as they're called in. Call for service for theft report, you're going to go take the report. Could be arrest or whatever. Another 30-year time, basically, you got to write reports. The arrest isn't done until the paperwork's done. You got to do briefings, you got to write reports. In today's society, you got to write a good report, you got to do those kind of things, or it's not going to get, you're not going to get the arrest, you're not going to get the convictions. So that's kind of the way we break down the officer's time. And again, I'm not one of these people that's going to stand up there and read the slide till you, I think that's redundant. So I just want to give you a quick overview. Let me show you, if you, I broke it down here so you can see a third, this is the officer's time, administrative, activity, and community policing. And I give you kind of some of the different calls for service that we went over this past year, domestic violence, some thefts, criminal damage. And then what I did is I broke down, we have 20 sworn patrol officers. If you take that, 40 hours per week, 2,080 hours a year, it's 41. Okay, how do you pick? How do you decide? How many officers do we need? Well, the International Association of Chiefs of Police really has done a lot of work and has broken this down for you. When you take an officer's workload, his duty time, they work ten-hour shifts. We break it down into thirds. A third of their shift should be very proactive. You're out doing patrols, you're looking for things that might be wrong, you're out there doing community policing. Another thirty-year department of your shift time is going to be reactive. You're going to be out there taking the calls for service as you're handled, as they're called in. Call for service for theft report, you're going to go take the report. Could be arrest or whatever. Another thirty-year time, basically, you've got to write reports. The arrest isn't done until the paperwork's done. You've got to do briefings, you've got to write reports. In today's society, you've got to write a good report, you've got to do those kind of things or it's not going to get... You're not going to get the arrest, you're not going to get the convictions. So that's kind of the way we break down the officer's time. And again, I'm not one of these people that's going to stand up there and read the slide to you. I think that's redundant. So I just want to give you a quick overview. And let me show you, if you... I broke it down here so you can see. A third, this is the officer's time, administrative, activity, and community policing. And I give you kind of some of the different calls for service that we went over this past year. Domestic violence, some thefts, criminal damage. And then what I did is I broke down, we have twenty sworn patrol officers. If you take that, forty hours per week, two thousand eighty hours a year, it's forty-one thousand six hundred hours that are available for patrol time. When you look at, and I'm being very conservative when I say, every officer probably has a week's vacation and at least forty hours of mandatory training. So if you deduct that, that leaves forty thousand available hours for patrol time. Well, if you take the calls for service of which Florence had, was about twelve thousand calls for service, you break that down, you're right in the area of where we want to be. A third of their time is spent handling calls for service. And what I did, I made a general assumption here for the ease, I just took every call, giving each call one hour to handle that call. I didn't include the backup time or sending two officers or three officers or one call taking two or three hours. As you all know, if you get a DUI in today's world, it could take four or five hours with all the mandates that now go along with a DUI arrest. So in breaking this down, I wanted to give you a quick overview and show you that with twelve thousand calls, we have thirteen thousand three hundred hours, we're right in the right ballpark of reactive calls for service. That still gives us a third of an officer's shift to write reports, to do those kind of, to do eat, brief, do some kind of training, and then a third of their time to be very proactive within our community. They need to be proactive and do those kind of crime prevention programs. Give you an idea of, this is our current shifts. As you see, the first set of officers up there is the day shift. The second set is our three shifts, our afternoon shift, and the bottom number of officers is the midnight shift. Well, most shifts are assigned for officers. If you look at the midnight shift, there are four days in each of the two-week periods there where we only have three officers working. And the reason I bring this up is because when you talk about relief time, when officers are off for comp time, right now, there's over five hundred hours on the books for comp time, military, sick time, vacation time. Right now, there's five thousand some odd hours on the books for vacation time. What I'm saying is generally, there's an officer off almost every day of the week, just taking an extra day off, vacation day, a comp day. So it takes four officers to really get a staff of three. And as you can see, three officers for sixty-eight square miles from the town of Florence is a lot of area to cover. Sixty-two square miles right now and with an annexation, that would bring in another seven miles, so... This just gives you kind of an overview of how we staff our officers. We're trying to put four on each shift so that we know that we'll have at least three officers working at all times. Just to give you a quick overview of what kind of calls do we have? If you look at the top, there are Part One crimes, crimes against person. We had a spike where you had twelve. That's really, those are really good statistics for a community of this size. Those are Part One crimes against person. As you can see, a spike of twelve is kind of, normally, they run around five, six different crimes. For this size community, those are good stats. If you look at the Part One crimes against property, they've actually overall have gone down. And I believe part of that is because you have officers who are doing things more proactively, doing beat checks, doing vacation checks, doing business checks. You can really make an impact if you can break the crime cycle. If you... A crime cycle really is three different things. You have an opportunity, you have a victim, and you have a perpetrator. And if you can break any one of those, if you can take care of a perpetrator, arrest them, you've broken the crime cycle. If you can take away the opportunity, you can break the crime cycle. And to be proactive is where I want to be and to break that crime cycle, so... As you can see on the other calls for service, those are quality of life issues. Those are the calls where we want to spend a lot of time. We're out there interacting with the public. Those have went up. To me, that's important. That says we're out there doing what we should be, interacting with our community members. Traffic, we've pretty much evened that out. We spend some time, we try and have the officers spend some time of their day working traffic details. There's a lot of traffic, since Florence is a hub, it is the county seat, there's a lot of traffic in and out of Florence. And there's a lot of people that are speeding up and down Hun Highway and we're trying to work on the traffic and get people slowed down. And again, that's not all citations. I'm a big believer in education. I think we should educate people on traffic problems, what the problems are, do a lot of that before we go to arrest or citations. Those are kind of some of the things that we're working on on a daily basis. Right now, this is what the beats look like. What we've done is we've sat down and we looked at our calls for service. We did a workload assessment, we did a call load assessment. As you can see, Beat Three, you have most of Anthem up there. It's kind of a long ways from the downtown area. You're talking eight, nine miles. You have... It's kind of a separate community in one sense. You have Beat Two, which is the high school in the Adamsville Road area or Ataway. And then you have Beat One, which is part of your downtown area. What we did is try and break up the workload so that each officer working, three officers working, would have ample workload, but yet still be close enough for a backup or if something major happened, we'd have the officers positioned in a good area. What we're doing is we're collecting information to get a baseline, and this seems to be working out real well at this point. If you annex, we talked about it, maybe a fourth beat would be the Magic Ranch area. We'll look at what the workload assessment is there, and we talked a little bit about that last week. But we have plans in place of maybe working around and seeing what the workload is and deploying our officers so that we'll cover that area and still provide all the amenities and services that we currently do for our community now. This is an idea of what it would look like if there were a fourth beat. I want to tell you a little bit about, just about the police department and what we've done over the last year. This is the new evidence facility. This was started in 2007 and I was fortunate enough to be here when it got completed. This really gave us the storage for all of the evidence that Florence takes in. This gives us an opportunity to do some training and it sets us in place for if we need to expand in the future, there's plenty of room that'll take Florence where it needs to go over the next ten or fifteen years. As you can see a little bit on the inside, it's got a nice system to store the evidence. And evidence is one of those areas that can get you in trouble real quick if you can't produce evidence to go to court or if you can't show the chain of custody. So as you can see, we have freezers in the back. They have redundant systems on them in case they go down. They'll give you four or five hours to get someone out to fix them. It's a great system and it's really money well spent. It's all computerized. Everything is barcoded so we know exactly what's on each shelf and we conduct periodic checks to ensure that we have what we say we have. So it's a real step forward and it really brings it into the 21st century. On the backside of this same evidence and property area, there's additional space. We set up kennels so that if we pick up stray dogs, we're not having to call the county. They also house our two K-9 dogs. On the inside, there's air conditioning there. The dogs can come in and out as they please. It's a good system and it also saves us from having to call animal control out at three o'clock in the morning if we find a stray dog. We can hold on until business hours the next day. This same facility also houses Dan's IT new system as well. So he's safe and secure and we have a redundant system there, so Dan got pulled into that as well. We've really worked hard to make this a useful area and something that the town can be proud of. As you can see, we took the area where the evidence was. We've made it into an evidence, somewhere where they package the evidence, but at the same time, an area for the officers, for their lockers. We've tried to utilize the space and make this a very professional-looking building. Our communications, they just, this occurred just as I was coming onboard and finished up. It's a, this has really brought the communications area a long ways. As you can see, dispatching has come a long way where it used to be just a microphone and hand, well, dispatchers are now looking at five, six, seven screens. There's a lot going on and while you really can't see a whole lot, but this is really a great system. The dispatchers can actually stand up, they can sit down. This is ergonomically set up for them. They're there for a long time, sometimes twelve, fourteen hours. So they can raise those up, they can adjust them, make it set up just for them for the time that they're working. And that really means a lot. And this really gives us better coverage for not only police, but also fire. As you know, we dispatch for fire as well. So, and in this, we also bought new radios for all the officers. That brings us up to the Project Twenty-Five radios. They're really the most progressive radios that are out there at this time. So we've come a long way and the system has really made it a lot safer for the officers to be able to communicate with one another and to the base station. Our training room. I'll show you a picture. You can see, this is what it looked like before. This is what it looked like after. Before, they did evidence there, they wrote reports. It was kind of a storage area and we've really cleaned it out to make it into what it should be, a training and report-writing area. Our plan is in the future is to do a lot more in-house training. Right now, we send a lot of people out and we'll continue to have to send some out, but we have a lot of general instructors. We can also invite other departments over and through cooperative efforts, have ongoing training throughout Pinellas County. And we'll be able to pick up a lot more training and have our officers do a lot more training with other departments. So this is really a win-win and it makes, gives us a much more professional outlook within the department. And we used the behavioral science people to come over and they all donated their time, painted all this, so we were able to stretch the dollar and actually do the floors, the walls, and the equipment that you see there in a second. So, really makes it a nice facility. Something else we've done, we had ACI make this drop-off box for prescription jugs that sits in the lobby of the PD. And you ask yourself, "Has it been used since we put it in?" This was just in the first month. We collected six and a half pounds of just old prescriptions that people had laying around their house. There was everything from needles and we emptied out about once a week or once every week and a half now with people coming in, just dropping off prescriptions. So we take care of it. Keeps it out of the sewer systems and it gets it out of the house and if they don't need it, we'll take it. It keeps it probably from kids that shouldn't have it or other people that shouldn't have it. So it's another way to interact with the community on a base, good basis. Governor's Office on Highway Safety, so far this year, they've given us twenty-two thousand and five hundred dollars. We also just picked up another forty-eight thousand dollars in grants from the Governor's Office on Highway Safety. This is also for speed. We've been working school zones. And the one thing that I really like about, even with these DUIs, I believe that we should educate people. So we're going to use part of this to educate people about when we're going to be doing details. The idea is really to keep people from drinking and driving. It's not just, it's not all about arrest, as I said earlier, and I am a big believer in education. We need to tell people, "We're going to be out there." I don't even mind posting it and telling them, "Hey, this coming weekend, we're going to do a DUI detail." The idea is to keep people off the road. It's not always about arrest. But with this grant, we're working with not only Florence, but the surrounding areas and putting this to good use, to keep people slowed down and keep DUIs off the streets. We have increased our number of arrests and we have, as you can see, we've responded to different calls for service. Volunteers. You have a great bunch of volunteers here in the Florence area and you can see all the different things that they help us out with. They do everything from taking cars over to the garage to get them repaired, to standing at intersections, at funeral details. We estimated their value according to the Volunteers in America Service is what you would pay a volunteer for that kind of service. And we figured out so far this year, it's been around thirty-nine thousand dollars that they've saved the community by their efforts. And you'll see there, front desk walk-in reports. This is a program that we want to implement. And that is, there's a lot of reports out there that people would just like to call in, "You lost a cell phone" or "There's been a minor incident." Well, our volunteers have, we're working now to allow people to call in during certain hours of the day and they can take those reports over the phone or someone can walk in and one of the volunteers will take the minor report and do it for them rather than have to wait for an officer or call an officer out. That keeps the officer on the street and he gets minor reports taken in a timely fashion. So, that's another program that we're working on. Truck enforcement. Florence has two commercial vehicle officers that are, that do truck inspections. It was earlier this year, we brought it before the town council and any overweight or fines, actually, it'll be brought before the magistrate and the town court. So if the fines, if there are fines, it'll come back to the town as a revenue stream. There's a large number of trucks going in and through Florence and we're running details when time allows or if we have the overtime monies through the state. We'll work with other departments and run details in and around Florence. They've done a really good job of finding trucks that are in need of repair and being able to put them out of service. It helps to keep the community safe. Another thing we're doing, we're working with Homeland Security, Pinellas County, and this is Operation Stone Garden. What we're finding is I-10 is certainly a corridor coming up from Mexico, but we're also finding that as there's a lot of officers up and down I-10, people are finding different routes and 77 and 79 is another route that comes up through Florence that we'll be working on with the Border Patrol. And all this will be done through grant funding, working close with Pinellas County and we'll be looking for, as you can see, any individuals transporting drugs or if there is a lot of undocumented, we'll be working with Border Patrol on those issues. And again, this will all be federal funded.
Get into your mic a little bit more, you're starting to back away.
Oh, I'm fading on you? Sorry. We did a kind of little strength of weaknesses. The strengths are, you have, we have really dedicated personnel. We have a lot of community support. We have an active volunteer program. There's opportunities for growth. We look at this as a stable town government and we have a good community policing philosophies. I don't always look at weaknesses, but you know, are there a number of officers that'll handle the calls for service? If we grow, you know, that might become a weakness. Probably one of the biggest things I see that's been a threat is we've lost a lot of highly-trained staff and sometimes you just do because people want to go to, you know, the valley or a different opportunity. But those are things you just work around and overall, the department does well and we're growing and we're doing well. And I think a lot of that comes from the support that we've gotten from all of you and from the town management. I'd like to end it with one of my favorite sayings, and that's by Sir Robert Peel. Most of you know, he's the one who started England's bobbies, as they're called, and so, you know, "The police are the public and the public are the police." The police being the only members of the public who are paid to give full-time attention to the duties which are incumbent upon every citizen in the interest of the community welfare and existence. And to me, all that says is the police need to partner with the community because the job isn't going to get done if we're not all out there working towards the same goal and that's to keep this community safe.
Are you done?
I'm done.
Any member of the council have any questions they'd like to ask Dan? Any comments? Wilbert, quite an advancement, isn't it? Yeah, a lot of you don't know that in 1980, the Florence Police Department was now in the building where the Curus Mining Office is down on Main Street. It consisted of three rooms. No, I'll take that back, one room because that was Town Hall. And we had one little building there or one little room in that building. Seven full-time officers, three part-time dispatchers. The county did our dispatching night. Had twenty-three cars though. Three of them ran. And, yeah, I take a look away, it's come over the last thirty-some years and the quality of law enforcement that has, we've just been continuously improving. of law enforcement that has, we've just been continuously improving on it here. The types of law enforcement has changed over the years. Back in the eighties, we used to, uh, love to chase inmates that escaped from the prison. Right, Sam? I mean, and that was before they implemented their tighter security out there at the prison. Juvenile has always been a problem, no matter where you go, you're always gonna have kids experimenting, testing the waters. Drugs have always been a problem, it doesn't matter where you go, you're gonna have that. But Dan, I've seen an improvement, and, you know, folks, I'm not sure that the improvement that we've seen here since Dan came aboard had anything to do with the Chief of Police, because he's actually turned older today. Uh, he's got up into where he's only a few years behind me now, but, uh, Dan, on behalf of the council, myself, happy sixtieth birthday.
Thank you.
Just forget what I'm driving tonight, okay? Terry? Terry, thank you.
Agenda item seven, consent. All items indicated by an asterisk will be handled by a single vote as part of the consent agenda unless the council member or member of the public objects at the time the agenda's called. Item A, authorization to award bid and purchase of a new heart monitor from Basio Control Inc. in an amount not to exceed ninety-seven thousand, three hundred and seventeen dollars and eleven cents. Item B, authorization to award a bid and purchase of thirty-one Panasonic chuff pad tablets from Better Direct in an amount not to exceed sixty-eight thousand, two hundred and thirty-six dollars and forty-three cents. Item C, authorization to enter into an agreement with Environmental Systems Research Institute, ESRI, for GIS Enterprise License Agreement Annual Renewal in an amount not to exceed twenty-seven thousand, one hundred and seventy-five dollars. Item D, authorization to sell used nine-hundred-six, ninety-six gallon trash containers to the city of Coolidge at a maximum rate of twenty dollars per container. Item E, author, approval of the resignation of Anne Cartier-Bresson from the Redevelopment Commission. Item F, authorization to forward a favorable recommendation to the Arizona Department of Liquor Licensing Control for Pinell County Mounted, Pinell County, Pinell Mounted Posse's application for a special event liquor license for a fundraiser being held August seventeenth, two thousand and thirteen, at the Charles Whitlow Rodeo Grounds. Item G, approval of the acceptance of the registered demands ending June thirtieth, two thousand and thirteen, in the amount of one million, six hundred and six thousand, nine hundred and fifty-eight dollars and fifty-seven cents. Mayor and members of councils, that is your consent agenda.
Any member of the council have anything they'd like taken off the consent agenda? Any member of the general public have anything they'd like to be taken off the consent agenda? Hearing, seeing no action, I'll ask for a motion.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda, Azren.
I second it.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda, any other discussion? Hearing and I'll call for the question, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Item eight, new business. Resolution number one-four-zero-seven dash one-three, discussion approval, disapproval of a resolution of the Town of Florence, Pinell County, Arizona, rescinding previous approval, approved resolution number one-one-five-two dash oh-nine, which adopted the Town of Florence travel policy and procedures.
Charles?
Scott, Barbara, go ahead, please.
What we're going to Scott, yeah?
Mayor, and members of the public, as you already know, members of the council, excuse me, uh, staff has been working with policies over the last number of months, um, not the least of which is our personnel policy, which went into effect on July first. We also were looking at other unrelated policies, and one of those that was reviewed was our travel policy, and as we looked at that, it was needing some updating, some revision, addressing our per diem rates, and what have you. The employee travel policy has historically been a council-approved document, and it has all the basics regarding payment and reimbursement for employee-related travel. Um, the travel policy tends to be really an administrative policy, and so staff is requesting that it be clarified as such, and it has been determined in consultation with our town attorney, the best way to accomplish that is to request that you rescind the adopting resolution passed in two thousand and nine, and if you agree to do that, then the, the travel policy will become a count, a town manager-approved administrative policy. Be glad to answer any questions you have.
Any member of the council having a question for Scott? Hearing and I'll call, we need a motion?
I make a motion to approve the adoption, uh, number one-four-zero-seven dash one-three to rescind resolution number five-two.
Second? We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution fourteen-oh-seven dash thirteen to rescind resolution number eleven-fifty-two dash oh-nine. Any other discussion? Hearing and I'll call for the question, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Item B, resolution number one-four-zero-eight dash one-three, discussion approval, disapproval of a resolution of the Town of Florence, Pinell County, Arizona, rescinding previously-approved resolution number one-one-seven-four dash zero-nine, which adopted the Town of Florence Loss Control Policy Manual. Scott Barber will also be handling this item.
Mayor, and members of the council, this is similar to the previous one. Um, as we went through, uh, and developed our personnel policy for your consideration, which you ultimately gave us, there were a number of policies that were extracted from the personnel policy that were more appropriately administrative policies in nature. As, uh, we, uh, began to look at that, one of the things that came out of our personnel policy was our, uh, the drug and alcohol testing policy. Uh, it was our intention to add that to our loss control, our risk-management manual. We discovered through that process that the loss control policy manual had previously been a council-approved document, and so what we're asking this evening is for you to rescind the resolution which approved the loss control policy manual, therefore making that document a town manager-approved administrative policy. We can overhaul that, make it more user-friendly, and incorporate the elements of the personnel policy that were withdrawn that need to be administrative policies, including our drug and alcohol testing policy. Glad to answer any questions you have.
Any member of the council have any question for Scott?
No.
Hearing and I need a motion?
I make a motion to adopt resolution number one-four-zero-eight dash one-three, and to rescind resolution number one-one-seven-four dash zero-nine.
Second? We have a motion, couple of seconds, to adopt resolution fourteen-oh-eight dash one-three to rescind resolution eleven-seventy-four dash zero-nine. Any other discussion? Hearing and I'll call for the question, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Item C, resolution number one-four-zero-nine-one-three, discussion approval, disapproval of a resolution of the Town of Florence, Pinell County, Arizona, providing for compliance with ARS Section sixteen dash two-oh-four, as amended by the Arizona State Legislature in two thousand and twelve. Mayor and members of council, this is the resolution that will actively lengthen each of your terms by six months to make us compliant with the law. It will also push our election cycle to the fall of two thousand and fourteen. We are doing so with compliance of the state law as passed in two thousand and twelve. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
I wish the state senator that put this on the agenda was here tonight, or passed the law. I'd like to give her a piece of my mind and tell them to state to stay out of municipal business statewide. Uh, it's affected almost every community in the state of Arizona, and, uh, thanks to the Goldwater Institute backing it, we're here where we're at today, so you're gonna put up me longer than you thought.
I, I will say that there are some issues that the Town of Florence is going to be facing, being that we are nonpartisan, and we are moving to a partisan election. One of those issues will be, is because the Town of Florence has voted for the last two election style by a mail ballot, that we do have more than fifty-two percent of our voters that have chosen to vote permanent early ballots. What does that mean? It means that you, if you are an independent voter, voting on a partisan ballot, that the county has to go through an extra step of mailing you a card to say, what ballot would you like? And the voter does have to choose a ballot in order to be able to vote in the town's nonpartisan election.
So, in other words, if you're independent, you're gonna be, choose to be a Republican or a Democrat in order to get a ballot?
They, they will need to choose an official ballot that has a runoff so that they can vote in the town's election. We're going to be working with the county, plus we're going to be starting a, um, campaign that will start early in the spring to get out and explain how to go about voting, um, what's going to change for our citizens, and make sure that we do the best to make sure that every citizen's voice is heard in our election.
They put the extra burden on the citizen to, in a nonpartisan election. Uh, we were able to save the home rule election this year, or keep it out of the, uh, deal. But what you're gonna mount to, what you're gonna see is, uh, all elections being on the, even years, and then when it comes down to the home rule and your county elections, when you have a, a national election, includes a presidential election, the towns and cities are gonna be at the bottom of the ballot, and more than likely behind the resolutions and, and everything else that they put on the ballot to vote on. So, if people don't really study their ballot, their sample ballots they get, they'll never see us down at the bottom. So, we, we're gonna have to really educate people, along, gotta be coming out of the clerk's office, more information on this.
There's one more issue that you're going to face, being an elected official, moving over to a partisan election, and that will be to have a true count as to the number of valid ballots cast in the election to determine the fifty-plus-one percent of who would be elected in a primary election. Um, it, it, what it's going to do is, it's going to count every valid, every valid ballot cast at that polling site regardless of what the issue is, and, um, we were offered a fix for that, but because our mayor is elected every four years, it doesn't really apply to the Town of Florence, or any community that has a four-year elected mayor. So, what we will have is, we will, we will be having, if we have an undervote, uh, we will be having runoff elections more often. And so, people will be moving over to the general election, and during that, a general election, the November election, that will be the only time that we will be putting, um, initiative referendums or propositions on the ballot. Actually, any for like a home rule option will have to go to a November, I misspoke. If there is a special election, you still have the spring cycle available, it is just not available for candidate elections or the home rule cycle.
And it's gonna be more costly. It's gonna cost us more money.
We still have to work out with the Pinell, Pinell County, how we're going to work the, um, polling places, but at this time, the Town of Florence is one polling place. When we go with the county, we will have each precinct that will be open, we'll be operating a ground election, plus having fifty-two percent of our votes go out, uh, mail, so we will be doing basically two different types of elections and paying for two different types of elections to run. We are gonna try to work with the county to defray costs and make sure that we consolidate to make sure it's reasonable for all parties involved. I'd be happy to answer any other questions.
It wasn't a good law, as far as I'm concerned. Lisa's been working with it due to the fact through the clerk's office of the state, which she's the state association president. We have gone to meet with the senator, uh, she really, really didn't want to discuss it, and she said, come back and show us facts. Well, we've gotta get the facts together, but it's not gonna change. Uh, she's gonna keep it there. We tried to get our legislatures to work on it this year during the legislative session, and they were able to save the home rule to a certain degree, but that's about it, that's all we could, session we could get out of them. So, whether we like it or not, this is one of those things we're gonna have to pass and comply with the state law. Any other discussion? Hearing and I'll call for a question.
Make a motion to approve resolution number one-four-zero-nine-one-three, based on the implementation of House Bill two-eight-two-six, election consolidation.
We have a motion and a second to pre, uh, to pass resolution fourteen-oh-nine dash one-three, implementation of House Bill twenty-eight-twenty-six, election consolidation. Any other discussion? Hearing and I'll call for the question, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Thanks, Tom.
Item D, discussion approval, disapproval of two main options for proposed Arizona Farms annexation for the mayor and council's consideration. Um, this basically says discussion approval, disapproval of the blank annexation petition being filed for an Arizona Farms annexation.
Mark?
Mayor, members of the council, well, we have had about, I think this is our fourth meeting talking about these annexations in just a few months. Um, at the last work session, you were given a couple of books, we went into some detailed PowerPoint presentations. Uh, for anybody who hasn't been following this, I, you know, I'm gonna kinda talk about these concurrently, although there's a separate action on both, I wanted to show just a couple of exhibits. You can see the, the aerial map here, the, the yellow area represents the current town limits at about sixty-two point one square miles. Um, you can see the other two areas that are outlined in blue, one is the Arizona Farms annexation proposed, and the other is the proposed Magic Ranch annexation. Uh, if those annexations were completed, uh, that would bring the corporate limits up to sixty-eight point one square miles, and that is, uh, within our hundred-and-ninety-six square mile planning area. Also has the effect with both of them of bringing our population roughly from about twenty-five thousand to, to thirty thousand, and... At the last meeting, there was a spreadsheet that was presented to you, and there was a comment that was, that was made in regards to when we might collect the state shared revenues, so an adjustment was made in the calculation, and I can bring that up in the next, uh, slide for you. So, you can show now that the, that the deficit has continued into, into the second fiscal year. If you go down through the ten-year period, though, the net result is, is, is about the Also, the town manager has, uh, has not only worked on this, but has worked on the next slide, which shows, um, per capita figures.
I, you know, mayor, council, I apologize for the size, but, um, what, what my attempt was, you know, Councilman Salia, um, made a request to see where we're at providing services, uh, per capita for each of the, uh, operating departments throughout the town. If you'll look, um, what, what I basically did is take the existing budget that was approved by council solely for the general fund, and if you go over and it says existing level per capita for the general fund, that is the actual amount, um, that is set, is basically paid on behalf of citizens for each one of those service units. Now, I say on behalf of citizens because, first of all, you know, citizens based on their home would pay only property tax, and if you purchase goods in the town, of course, there's sales tax, there may be franchise fees, but, um, the overall amount of this comes from, you know, develop, development fees, those type of things, other things that come to the town that the citizens aren't paying directly, but these are the services per capita that, that is provided on behalf of each of the current citizens. If you move over, and if we, if town council chose not to annex these areas, the next column increase, uh, by year ten without the annexation, this is the average increase, approximately fifteen percent increase over the ten-year period of what those units are gonna be. So, we're gonna go from a five-hundred-and-twenty-four, eighty-nine cents per resident, to approximately six-hundred-and-three-point-six-two. If we look at the last three columns, what we did is we took the year one cost, year five cost, and year ten cost. We increased those costs by approximately to year ten for the fifteen percent. What we did also increase was, the presentation that you were provided a few weeks ago from Elliot Pollak included, uh, operational increases for police, fire, public works, and parks and recreation. These were also included in there. So, if town council chose to annex with all those increase in services that we put forward to council as a recommendation, the cost per unit or cost per resident, uh, would be approximately five-hundred-and-sixty-three dollars over the same ten-year period. And that primarily is the difference because we're spreading the, spreading the burden over, yeah, a larger population, and that also means that no services will be impacted or pulled back that are currently being provided, and the services that are being provided will be pushed all, to the entire Florence area, and we would have, be providing the same amount of service level to all the citizens.
Any members, council have any questions for staff? Tommy?
Yeah, I've, I've got just a few questions, um. My, my main concern, I, I agree that there is a, there's a lot of potential in this, in this area for, for, uh, for the town that's in, in, in business and in, uh, uh, some of the populations, and, and I, I wanna make sure that we go through, you know, every detail as much as we can to make sure that we're, that we're gonna be, uh, we're gonna go, be okay through this. On the reports, there's, there's a lot of, a lot of speculation, I mean, you're, you're gambling on, on, uh, if we can get a grant, um, if this happens, or if this doesn't happen. Um, some of the things that are, that are in the... Some of the things that are, that are in the report are based on our state shared. I'm kind of curious as, if your understanding of where we're headed as far as state shared revenues. What, what does our future look like in that? Does it look like we're going to be losing any of that with, with any legislation that's coming up? The same thing, the same thing when it comes to, well, I'll, I'll let you answer that one first and then...
Councilman Selaya, mayor, council. At this point in time, we don't anticipate losing any of our state shared revenue. However, there's always that risk out there. The legislature come, come out, introduce new legislation that could reduce that. We can't anticipate that, but this is based on our current situation and current revenue and population as we increase if town.
So is there, is there any trend right now that, that looks like the state shared revenues are in danger for us to be re...
There's always discussion.
Nothing that you can... Okay, the other, the other question I, I, a concern that I had was our, our future in construction tax revenues and where we're headed in that. Basically, what I'm, I'm gathering is that in construction tax, they're going to change that so that, that, that only applies to materials that are purchased within, within the boundaries of the municipality, and, and currently, we don't have those resources to offer.
Councilman Selaya, you are correct. The state has been looking at that, but the municipal league has been working along with all the cities and towns throughout Arizona and also our legislators to ensure that if that legislation is pushed forward, that cities and towns would be held harmless as much as possible. So they are trying to figure out a method in order to do that.
Let's see what else I got here. The other, the other concern that I had was the, how soon we're able to address some of the demands of the area. If we do go into annexation, will we be immediately responsible for the full, full amount of services that, that our current citizens are receiving? Do we automatically jump into 100% demand, or is there an understanding that right now these citizens don't have all of those services and it'll take us a while in order to, to ramp up to providing the full service?
A couple of different ways, Councilman Selaya, to answer that. First, police and fire services, absolutely. However, I would also say that we already do respond more often than the county or rural metro in those areas anyway because we're closer. So we're, our, our staffs are responding to those situations. As far as public works, we've already made, you know, an assessment. Mr. Wayne Costa's made an assessment of those projects that need to be moved forward. They've been put in the plan. I think they're out there five years. There are a few things that need to be done in the near future. As far as parks and rec, we do need to identify some of those areas, and it is going to take a period of time. As far as library services, I know that the county library is looking at doing additional expansion and stuff like that. Those are things that we'll have to work alongside with them. But we are looking at all core services, so while we move forward immediately with police and fire and some public works, then we'll do parks, but it'll be a transition for the rest of those services. We can't do it automatically day one.
Okay. And then my final question, is it your impression or your feeling that your staff feels that we are able to accomplish the goals that you're setting in, in moving forward with this? Is there any, any concerns among staff that, that we need to be aware of?
I think, you know, originally, if we look back three months, I know that there were some current concerns about staff on how we look at this annexation moving forward, what this would do, and how we handle the assessment of the infrastructure that's currently out there. But I think that among the staff, I think every single one of them will tell you that this is probably the best thing for Florence, and we can accomplish this without a problem.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I'd like to make a motion at this time to proceed with the filing of the proposed Magic Ranch, excuse me, run the other one. Arizona Farms annexation at this time.
I'll second.
We have a motion, second, to proceed with the filing of the proposed Arizona Farms annexation petition. Any other discussion? Hearing and now I call for the question. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Item E, discussion approval disapproval of two main options for the proposed Magic Ranch annexation for the mayor and council's consideration. Basically, what staff is asking is discussion approval disapproval of authorizing staff to file a blank annexation petition for the Magic Ranch annexation.
Mark? Same thing.
Mayor, council, same thing. No additional presentation required.
Tommy, do you have any other questions on this? Anybody else?
I'll make a motion to proceed with filing the proposed Magic Ranch annexation petition.
Second.
We have a motion to proceed with the filing of the proposed Magic Ranch annexation petition. Any other discussion? Hearing and now I call for the question. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Item nine, department reports. The manager would like to give a report at this time.
Mayor, council, you have a rather lengthy report that's been handed out to you. I do, I'm not going to read the whole thing. There are a few things I do want to mention to you all that I believe are important. The first item is that as of yesterday, I believe, Rural Metro, the provider in the rural areas and also Southwest, you know, the ambulance services that provide services to our citizens to be transported to hospitals and stuff like that, did file bankruptcy. We, staff is keeping a very close eye on this. Chief Zick has been communicating directly with them. We are going to make sure to the best we can there are no impacts to service delivery. However, I will say if those things do occur, we will communicate that directly to council immediately and see what we can come up with for any solutions or any issues as we move forward. We are keeping a close eye on this, and, and as we get any additional details, we will let you all know. Also, last week, or actually the week before, I'm starting to lose track of my time, the downtown Florence Hospital was sold. It was sold to Dr. Tackeyar. That hospital, I believe it is the intent that they will begin operations, probably different types of operations by the end of this year. And we have been working with them to, you know, see what we can do to help them. Next, we did receive, I believe, an application or intent to go ahead and fill the vacant lease spot out there in Anthem to Banner Medical Group. So we'll be, staff will be working with them to go ahead and continue on moving in that direction. Those of you that have not been in the Anthem area, Pulte has begun doing major dirt moving around to go ahead and start the construction, and I'm not sure if it's a completion, but it's the majority of that property, the vacant property, for the additional fields, soccer fields, and baseball fields in that area. Next, the last two things I wanted to mention to you all is, one, we have been communicating with the Florence Unified School District. We have been, the staff has been providing, the town has been providing before and after school services in the core for years. We have gotten requests for that to occur in the Anthem area. We have been communicating with the school district and to find, find out what the potential for us to provide that service is and what that would take. It's going to take us at least two or three months to make that full assessment before we can even offer that service, and if that service is offered, it wouldn't probably be until at least January next year. Also, if you all haven't seen, there is a considerable amount of work happening, road work happening in the downtown area between the curb cuts and the repairs that are occurring on Main Street, Butte Avenue. So there are a number of things happening. If you have any questions, by all means, please let us know. And then the last item is, in the core, there has been a considerable amount of bulk waste that has been piling up along some of the streets. Staff has been working with RAD and also communicating with the residents that they need to ensure that they follow the schedule for bulk waste pickup. And we're trying to work with them as much as possible, and we're all, we are doing some communication and some press releases. It is, we've been doing pickup for bulk waste anytime citizens put it out there for the better part of a number of decades, and it's going to take some time for us to communicate and educate citizens on how to go ahead and make sure that gets picked up. So if you have any questions, I'm, I'm here to answer.
Anybody have any question at all? Any have, any council, any department heads that are here? Okay. Go to call the public, second call to the public, the same admissions that I gave at the beginning in place. Anybody like to talk? You have a three-minute time limit? Seeing a movement call, close the public, call to the council. Ruben?
And I'd like to say the planners that were put up on Main Street is very visible, and I think they, they really look nice and something different that we could see around town like that.
Tommy?
Tara?
I want to thank the Chamber of Commerce for their casino night the other night. It was amazing. Well put together. Also, your presentation for the police department tonight, a lot of hard work and effort went into that, so thank you for that presentation as well, and happy birthday.
Larry?
I don't have anything to...
Tom?
Something that happened in Florence, as you'll notice, Councilman Hawkins is not here tonight. Yesterday, his father, Amos Hawkins, passed away. Amos Hawkins was back a long time in history in this town, and a lot of us knew his parents, also Amos Hawkins. But the point is, and I don't know how we're doing on this, I'll talk to staff later. He was elected council in Casa Grande. He was then appointed by council to be the mayor of Casa Grande. And then he was elected the first elected mayor of Casa Grande. Important. Good man.
I'll second your, everything you said about Amos, not only a good man, but a good friend of the town. Moved away, became successful, came back home. I know he was proud of Bill for the job he was doing as council member. Talking with Bill today, everything's been set, his arrangements have been made there. It's going to be a celebration of life, that's 99.9% sure, on Saturday at the Elks Club, but that announcement will be coming out later. The other, you know, the other person that died in this area that had a lot of input on kids was Coach Hawkins from Coolidge, Alva Hawkins. And even though he's from Coolidge, I think it's important to, to the public to know that he had a heck of an impact on a lot of kids in this area, even us that played against him all the time, or, and most of the time we got beat by him. You guys are too young, I don't think you were in school then when, when Alva retired. But he was always a gentleman and a sportsman, and, and we all respected him. Anybody that played Coolidge respected Alva Hawkins. So Mr. Hawkins, both of Mr. Hawkins are going to be missed. I didn't get to go to the casino night. I understand it was very successful, and congratulations to the chamber on that. I did attend the dedication of the New National Bank, very nice ceremony, a lot of potential there. But, you know, the thing about it with that sign out in front, and that new building on the corner, that just makes, we should be doing more as we come down towards Town Hall on Main Street. I would like to, the planner boxes, you know, we talked about that a long time ago, that's coming. The curb cuts are going in right now. The Main Street beautification should be done in 18 months approximately. We've got a lot going. Now it's just a matter of getting some businesses built. We need to start working on getting some of those buildings put back into shape where they're rentable or buyable. So let's don't stop. We've started. We've got a good start on it. Let's, let's don't wait another nine years to get a project on the, on the board, Jess. A.D.O.G. grants, we don't need any more of those right now. It's going to take nine years for us to get it going. And again, Dan, I didn't mean to embarrass you, but happy birthday. The 60 years, you're just on the upside.
Okay. We need a motion?
Make a motion to adjourn.
To executive session.
Executive session. We have a motion, second, to adjourn to executive session. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We'll be in executive session. After executive session, we will come back and adjourn the regular meeting.